Good morning, everyone. Excuse me. Today is Thursday, June 26, 2025, and we are on the record with the Grant County Board of Equalization, and we'll be hearing petition number 2024-001 for parcel 7556-040411025, represented by H5 Data Centers Quincy LLC, Fox Rothschild LLP, Michelle Delap, who is in attendance. The Assessor's Office is represented by Matt Hope, who is also in attendance. Please silence your cell phones. Note that these hearings are being recorded and will be posted to the YouTube channel once the order has been issued. Mr. Chair, the board is convened and the hearing is open.
Hearing today is regarding the true fair value set by the Grant County Assessor's Office. The Board of Equalization is independent of the Assessor's Office. We are three citizens appointed by Grant County Commissioners and trained by the Department of Revenue. Today's board is comprised of myself, Jim Breakville, his chair, Mark Steinmetz, his vice chair, and Brenda Douglas, his member. We have received, or we have reviewed all the evidence presented by both parties. This hearing is only to provide any additional oral testimony. No new evidence may be submitted at this time. Remember, everyone's time is valuable. Please try to keep to the timelines. Please address the board only. Do both the appellant and the assessors represent swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Okay. The appellant will go first and present testimony, then followed by the appraiser.
I'm starting the clock for 15 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us a little extra time this morning to cover these complex appeals. The appeal that we're first hearing for H5 Data Centers is obviously a data center. I know that this property has been before this board every year for quite a few years. Fortunately, we have, I think, been making quite a bit of headway in correcting the value back from the days when it was first sold by Intuit and sold for a value that was about $36 something million. So that was a big decrease from what the prior assessed value has had been. And I think that correction process is getting closer to the right value. But we are still having a delta in value here for January 1, 2024 that we are asking this board to correct. And I hope that, based on the momentum that we have, both from the Board of Tax Appeals decisions, which are cited in the first page of my letter, I think that might be page four of your, how your materials are numbered. Maybe you could let me know so that then my pagination, I hope, will be right so that you can find things as we go. So my letter dated May 27, 2025.
The letter, I don't see a page number on it.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure how to. That's great, though. If you have the letter in front of you. So on, on the first page of that letter, are you able to see that?
Brandon, do you know how to get her out of the two in each thing?
Yeah.
I never know how it appears on your side. So I'm trying to figure that out and be better at this.
I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
And they're trying to get better, Ma. Be able to see it better also.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because we had called beforehand to figure out how it shows up there so we can be more efficient in our presentation. Do they see it as separate documents? Exactly, yeah. So if it's the petition, I don't know if there was no.
Now you notice your evidence, then the assessor's evidence.
And here, there was no value notice because it was a protective appeal. So I'm not sure if that skips that page.
15 minutes on these rather than 15. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So my, my letter, page one of my letter, is that in front of you?
Uh huh.
Okay. And then you can see that there are some citations there in the middle of the page. Those are those Board of Tax Appeals decisions that have resolved some of the past years. So for the first decision, reduced the 2017 assessed value. So we've gotten that one cleaned up finally. It reduced it to the taxpayers' appraised value. At that time, that was $39.3 million. I think it's important to recognize at that time, this building was fully occupied. And then in, later in 2024, the Board of Tax Appeals reduced this data center's value to $37.5 million. And the party subsequently agreed that it should, because it was also pending. Before Superior Court, we agreed to resolve it slightly below that because that included the personal property. So we, we agreed to the same value that it was sold for, $36 something million. So at any rate, the board's decision in that latter case, I think, is the most instructive for one of the issues that we're dealing with still in the 2024 value. We have resolved all the other years. But that 20, this 2024 value, the Department of Revenue appraisal is the, the assessed value is based on their income approach. And the issue with their income approach is that they are basing it on income, you know, rental income that is much higher than this property has ever achieved. And their reasoning for that seems to be based on a power capacity, just an overall power capacity that they apparently verified with the Grant County PUD. The issue is, as this decision from the Board of Tax Appeals discusses, that the data centers, the way that they work is that they have redundant power and they, and then they have a lot of other things that draw from the power. So the power that they lease, that's, it's, it's, with data centers, as you probably know, I know you see a lot of data center appeals coming through here. It's, it's not rent per square foot. It's rent by kilowatt of power. And so the leasable power is not the same as the power that may be going to the site. And there are several reasons for that. At the bottom of the second page of my letter, in bold, there are some, there's some quotes from the Board of Tax Appeals decision about the reasons that the power is, is not as high as the Department of Revenue keeps thinking it is. The power, the infrastructure at this site, the owners would need to pour tens of millions of dollars into this site to have the, the level of power capacity, leasable power that the Department of Revenue is assuming. And that has not happened. Those, the property as it is has not changed, you know, through these years. So the only correction that we are asking for is what I have set forth on the following page, page three of my letter. And you'll see there a corrected assessor's direct capitalization. The original, the, the column there that says "original" is the same as what is in the assessor's Exhibit A2. And my guess is that might be something like page 122, if you have the numbers going all the way through your packet. The only change is to the gross income. So if you see that gross income line, it says $13,709,203. All we did was put in what the actual income, rental income was for the, you know, the real estate, the rental income for the kilowatts of power from the tenants. And that is the 6.5 million approximately in the corrected column. So that, you can see in the Department of Revenue's own materials where that number came from. I think it's page 122 of your materials. That's, that number is right there. That is the highest amount of rental income this property has received for, ever since Intuit vacated the property. So it's not, it's higher than the five-year average. It's, it's, it represents the highest amount.
Do you know what your, what your number is? Like A22 or A?
So the, the assessor, this is in the assessor's materials. And it's Exhibit A2 of the assessor, the assessor stamped it Exhibit, well, yeah, Exhibit A2. And you don't have PDF pagination or something on your end? I'm sorry. I thought, I did all the numbers to try to get to what it might be on your side. It's like.
It's going to look a little bit like this if you're looking at something. It's from our, our information supply. It's awful small, so I don't expect you to read it. But if you look for something, it's going to be probably in yours turned, turned vertical.
Yes. And, and so if you zoom in on this side, it's.
There's six pages from the end.
Yeah, it's no problem. This can be, that's for my next hearing. They can, they can come in, no problem. Hello. So if you zoom into the right side of that page, you'll see that the income, there's an income statement there from the property owner. It looks like nobody's finding it.
It's, it looks like this, I believe.
Okay.
Not quite far enough. Taken me a minute to get there.
It's about the fourth and last one, you can see.
I will note, this, this owner has always been very open with the Department of Revenue with all of the data, including their financial data. So.
There.
Well, so, quite similar.
And so right in the middle of that little square on the right side, it says subtotal rental income. That's the income that pertains to the real property, which is what we're valuing here, right? So that says rental income $6,556,458. That's the same number you see on page three of my letter for gross income. And please let me know if you have any questions about that. But then the rest of the income approach that you see on the very leftmost side of that page, that Exhibit A2, it's just runs through the percentages that are listed there. So there's a percentage for operating expenses. All we did was apply the same percentages to the corrected column as was in the original column. The resulting value from correcting the department's income approach, $30,483,545. And that supports the, the value of $31 million that we're requesting, which is from carrying forward, another way of getting to the same place is carrying forward the same appraised value from the appraisal report that you have at Exhibit A of our materials. There have been no changes at the property. So that's, that's what we're asking for the board to do. I made it in my time. Thank you.
Questions?
Good morning. This is for petition 2024-001. It's for the H5 Data Center in Quincy, Washington. And all, there's only a couple of pages I, I want to make note of. I think there may have been some confusion on the determination that, that the Department of Revenue made. And first off, let me explain. Because of the special use nature of this property, as with all the data centers that we have in the county, we reach out and request the aid of the Department of Revenue as, as we are able to do by statute and request their aid in performing an appraisal, which we did for this, for the subject property. The determination for the 24-year for, for the, for 25 taxes was actually made to utilize the sale of the property and the trended investment method. We actually did not, we, we, or the, the Department of Revenue Appraiser did perform an income approach. But that was not the value that was reconciled to. We actually determined that the value to reconcile to was a reproduction, a trended reproduction of the original purchase price of the, the, the equipment that was purchased, the buildings, the land. And then from that, that trended value, the personal property that was assigned to the, to the taxpayer, which is on another account, was then removed from that overall value. And as well as the land, leaving the improvement value that you see on that first page of my response, which is $49,031,030. Added back with the land, it comes to $51,749,177. The information that I supplied with my response, it contains all of the information used for the different approaches. On page four of my response, you'll see the, the summary of important conclusions where it states the, the overall value of the personal property, the different methods that were used, the different approaches to value that were used, the trended investment method, value indication, which is the, the value that was reconciled to, which, and I'll, I'll explain a little bit more on what was done to, to achieve that value. The Marshall and Swift was also utilized and reviewed, but was not a part of the, the final reconciled value. It, again, was the trended investment method. The sales approach was looked at, but as the, the sale is a dated sale, although it was the sale of the property and, and was utilized, and was actually utilized in the information, again, that I'll discuss in just a few minutes, was, was there as well as the direct cap as, as the appellant's representative has stated and that you've, you've seen a portion of in my information there. So those were the different methods that were used. Based on the determination that the appellant's representative had, had brought up about the, the valuation process used in the past and the differences in the information received from the PUD versus what could potentially be used at the property level and what, what was able to be used. It was determined that they would take into account the sale value of the property and back out, take the, the overall trended value, the overall reproduction trended value of the entire property as it was, based on its original purchase cost versus what it actually sold for, and determine an obsolescence or a depreciation of that value, which led them to the value of the $52,500,000. That, that information can be seen on, excuse me, I don't tab that exact. Okay, so that, the, what I was talking about, about the original purchase price, value as of 2018, which was when H5 purchased the, the data center, can be seen on Exhibit A-8 of my response, which is part of the workbook from the Department of Revenue Appraiser. It shows the allocated purchase price, which was the, the purchase price for the, the building and land improvements, what's, what's really under petition today, and the historical purchase price of, based on the original purchase price of all of that equipment. And from that, they calculated a depreciation, an overall value to reduce to come to basically a square one as of the purchase price, or the purchase date in 2018. And from that, that value was then a reproduction, a trended reproduction was done to that value that can be seen on Exhibit A-7, giving us a, a valuation of the property as of that time. And so that information was, was then utilized along with what personal property was, value was gathered to, to come to that, that overall valuation. And so although the income approach was reviewed and was looked into, the overall resultant value came from that trended reproduction. So we asked the board to sustain the current assessed value, which is based on that trended reproduction value as of the value paid in 2018, based on that sale, and suster, and, and sustain our current assessed value, which for the land is $2,718,147, an improvement in building value of $49,031,030, leaving a total valuation of $51,749,177. Thank you.
Go with the land value again, please.
The, each of them, or the?
The land value.
Land value, $2,718,147.
Show on the data center world how long an appraisal is typically good for. I mean, this is a four-year-old appraisal now. Market's changed. COVID has changed things.
Yeah. So it depends on the circumstances, as you say. This appraisal report is actually post-COVID. And it did, what the appraiser has explained and is in my letter, is that there are two main things that have changed since this date that are pretty much offsetting factors. One being that rental rates have increased, which would, you know, argue for an increase in value. But that interest rate has increased, which would mean that your capitalization rate increases. Your capitalization rate has a very big effect on, of course, what happens with, you know, in decreasing that value. And I do have a couple of things to add, but after your questions.
And since the appraisal has happened, the, the customer load and service has not dramatically changed?
There has been no change to the property itself, to the infrastructure. The power capacity has not changed. So that is, it seems.
But the critical load being delivered to customers has not increased.
The critical, well, when you say the critical load delivered to customers.
They have not brought on more customers or brought on more customer load.
There has been an increase in the tenancy. So there's not as much vacancy. And that's why, you know, what we really feel like is the best way to, the, the report is there primarily to give you a lot of data about this building and about the market. The, what we're relying on primarily, however, is the correction to the assessor's own income approach that's shown there on, on page three. So we're not doing a vacancy shortfall under this income approach, if that answers your question.
Okay.
Yeah. Valuing is stabilized.
Ms. Trump?
And I, I did have just one thing I'd like to add. In, in the income, in the appraisal report, so one of the things about this appraisal report that I think is really key for the board is if you, the analysis of how an MAI appraiser approaches valuing this type of property when, and this is what this appraiser specializes in, data centers. If you look at the end of the appraisal report, so it's marked page Exhibit A101. It's the reconciliation. I understand. It has the heading reconciliation and final value opinion. This will be the last.
Towards the end.
Yes.
Like maybe 1000 or so pages in from the end.
This will be the last time I send you on a chase for a page.
I'm there. Are you there?
No.
Okay. It's, it's right over about here.
Page 109 on your PDF.
I'm almost there.
Two more. It's titled reconciliation. Up, up a little bit. Oh, the other way. I'm sorry.
Or?
The other way.
Is that 109?
101.
Oh, 101.
Jerry said it's page 109.
It's 109 of 135, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yep. So in that, that's a reconcili, that's like a normal reconciliation analysis in an appraisal report for a property like this. And if you look under the heading that says income capitalization approach, I'd just like to read that for the benefit of the board. "The income capitalization approach best reflects the value of the subject property as an investment with the capacity to generate income. There is a sufficient amount of recent good quality rental data available to estimate market rent." And, and here, we're using the actual rents, their recent leases at the property, you know, the highest that it's ever achieved. There's good quality rental data available to. Their expenses can be estimated with reasonable accuracy. So here, we're using the department's own expense data. And investment parameters were, at any rate, the, the, this is about the discount, the capitalization rate used. So again, we're here, we're using the Department of Revenue's capitalization. "The approach is more likely to be relied upon by investors." I will tell you that that sale price was absolutely determined using an income approach to value. If it had been using a, a cost approach, trended investment method, or Marshall valuation, then it may very well have come up with a value close to what the department, the Board of Tax Appeals corrected in that 2024 decision for the 2017 assessment year. Because the assessed value at that time was $116 million. And the Board of Tax Appeals said, no, it should be much closer to the value that it sold for, which was, you know, the value that they, it had been appraised by our appraisers at, at that time was $39.3 million. So that's a big delta. The assess, the assessor, I would say, the Department of Revenue is again making the same mistake it made then by acting as though cost is what investors use to determine the market value. And market value really is the North Star for property tax purposes, too. So that's what we should be using here. Happy to answer any other questions. Thank you for considering this.
Oh, anything?
Nothing more to add?
No.
Thank you.
Where are my stuff, is that? Sorry, I got all my stuff confused now.
We're right on schedule, I think.
Yes, that was fantastic. Okay.
This concludes the Grant County Board of Equalization hearing. The board will review all the information provided and board orders stating their decision will be issued within 45 days. If either party disagrees with the board's decision, they may appeal to the Washington State Board of Tax Appeals within 30 days of the mailing of the order. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
24-006.
I'm just gonna need a little rearrangement here, so.
You're gonna slide over to.
Oh, I think we're, we're good, we just need one.
You want to sit here, Michelle? Get to it, leave it. Hey, how am I supposed to see you again?
Okay, good morning again. Today is Thursday, June 26, 2025. And we are on the record with the Grant County Board of Equalization and we'll be hearing petition 2024 dash 006 for parcel 72465 dash 31344000, represented by SGL Carbon Fibers America LLC, Fox Rothschild LLP, Michelle DeLaab and?
Bernd Sundhodig.
Gotcha, I'll have you write that down. You are in attendance today. The assessor's office is represented by Matt Hope, who is also in attendance. Please silence your cell phones. Note these hearings are being recorded and will be posted to the YouTube channel once the order has been issued.
And may I ask also for, we have confidential information that we would like to discuss.
Perfect, so we'll be closing that down and then recording via a separate system.
No YouTube.
Just let me know when you're ready for that.
Thank you.
You bet. It's not going. There we go. Okay. Are you ready to start with the confidential immediately or do you want to talk for a little bit first?
I think it might be.
Before we do?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
That was right up.
My time is ticking though.
I know, that's right.
The green today is regarding the true and fair value set by the Grant County Assessor's Office. The Board of Equalization is independent of the Assessor's Office. We're three citizens appointed by the Grant County Commissioners and trained by the Department of Revenue. Today, the board is comprised of myself, Tim Breakenfeld's chair, Mark Steinmetz's vice chair, and Brendan Douglas as a member. We have two members in the back that are just observing at this point in time. We have reviewed the all evidence by both parties. This hearing is only to provide additional oral testimony. No new evidence may be submitted at this time. Remember, everyone's time is valuable, please try to keep to the timelines. Please address the board only. Do both the appellant and the assessor's representatives swear the testimony you're about to give us truth?
I do.
Yes, I do.
The appellant will go first and present testimony, then followed by the appraiser. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I'd like to first start by, if you would like to introduce yourself and your title, your role.
So my name is Bernd Sundhodig. I'm the Vice President Finance of SGL Carbon Fibers America. And I'm also the president of the head, the parent company here in the US, which is SGL Carbon LLC.
And I would like to start just by saying for the non-confidential portion, that the reason Bernd has come out, you know, from, traveled here from Charlotte where SGL is located, is because of the importance of this, to this site, to the, to the company. The value, we feel, is way beyond what the circumstances at this site warrant. I would like to start by pointing you to page three of my letter. And you will see there a, a table, a chart that has the assessed values from 2019 through 2024 for the subject property here, which is the main parcel of this carbon fiber manufacturing plant. You'll see here that we had a value that is approximately what we are requesting from all the way up until 2022 and, and in 2022. And what happened then, when you see that graph line jump up, is that there was a change in the appraiser. And a change in the appraiser should not mean a change in the market value of the property. In fact, as you'll hear, the circumstances, if they had been reviewed more carefully, would have warranted a decrease in value. And that's certainly what the company has found in its own valuation. In 2023, that value went up more than double and it's also at a very high level for 2024. The value that we are requesting is slightly different from what is on our petition. So if you look up, up above in the language, right above that table, you'll see the value that we're requesting is $81,664,000 for the total value of this main parcel. We are not contesting the land value. So the remainder would be for the improvements. That value is based on the properties, the, the property's value as impaired by the company. And so to discuss that in more detail, I think at this point it would be good to close.
Okay, we are going to shut down the recording and allow you to record it over here on another system.
Thank you.
Hey Caitlin, we'll see you when we come back.
I would just, the part at the very bottom of that page that we were just on, I don't have to say it in the hearing, you, you can read it. So that is also confidential.
We are back in open session.
All right, so this is for petition 2024 dash 006, which is the SGL Carbon Fibers America LLC. It's the SGL Carbon Fiber Plant in, in Moses Lake. This, due to its special nature, was a property that we requested the aid and the help of the Department of Revenue in performing an appraisal of the subject property to determine the true and fair market value. And the assessor was, agreed with the reconciled value at the time that, that was placed on the rules. Since then, with, with additional information and conversations that have been had with, with our office, with the taxpayer, as well as with the Department of Revenue, our, our value has changed, so I do have an updated recommended value that I will get to initially. The, the review was done and on, on my response on page three, you can see a summary of the conclusions that, just a brief overview of, of the decisions and the, the opinions of the appraiser that performed the, the appraisal of the subject property. Again, on this, on this property, there's a, a number of different valuations.
Looking for page three.
Perfect.
It keeps going, it's all the way down.
Page 43.
I figured it'd be way down there.
43 of 16.
That's right, you got it. Go back up.
You got this. Pretty, pretty slow today for some reason.
Oh, it's.
Slipping around a little. Okay.
Slower, okay. Go ahead.
So on that page, you'll see the, the initial determination from the Department of Revenue Appraiser that appraised the property and their opinions based on a few methods. The sales approach was, was not utilized due to lack of comparable sales or sales of properties that were comparable to the subject. But the, the cost approach, the trended investment method was the approach that Department of Revenue utilized for the cost approach. And then two separate income approaches were run. One using guideline companies, which on there is the GLC, is the guideline companies, which utilize income information as well as the different metrics used in, in the income approach based on other publicly traded companies and, and information that the appraiser was able to acquire for, for, from companies that were comparable, not exact, but, but comparable, guideline companies. The second value there on the income approach was the taxpayer metrics, which is the TPM used, which is, was based on information received from the taxpayer. And some of that was discussed earlier. But those were the values that were initially utilized. In the workbook, which was attached, as well as the, the explanation that the, the appraiser utilized, he describes the, the state at the time of the, the physical inspection and the, the meet with SGL, the state of the company and where things were at and what the projected outlook was going to be and what it appeared to be at the time. And so utilizing that, they steered away from, they put more weight on the, the information received from the taxpayer. So the taxpayer metrics in the income approach did still utilize a percentage of both the guideline companies as well as the trended investment method. And so there was a weighted value to determine the reconciled value that's, that's lower on that page of the 192, 192,900,000, which was the, the reconciled determination of the opinion of value from the Department of Revenue Appraiser. Like I said, we've had numerous conversations with Department of Revenue as well as with SGL. And the, the determination was made to, to look into the trended investment method, which takes again, or takes the, the original cost that was purchased for the equipment and, and trends that based on the same trends that the Department of Revenue has set out. And those trends are utilized for, for all the properties in, in this state. So all of our personal property and machinery and equipment and also utilized when we have that information on the building and land improvements. What the Department of Revenue Appraiser did to come to this final valuation, and I apologize, this was a, a determination after the, the chance to submit evidence. And so you won't have this information in front of you, so I apologize for that. But I will try and quickly explain and feel free to ask questions if you have questions. But what the Department of Revenue Appraiser did was take the, the amount of lines that were in operation in 2024 and continue the trends from the original purchase price for those lines as they were in operation for the 2024 year. But for the lines and, and to give you an idea, there's, there's six individual lines. Number six never really got up and going. It, it had parts and pieces, but never was, was in use. And so that, that value there was, was not accounted for. The, the spare parts and things were then assigned to one of the other lines in, in the breakdown that the appraiser did to, but it was not, was not something that was in use. And so was, was adjusted based on it not being in use. So took line one and two were also not in use. So you're left with three, four and five. Those were the lines that were in use. And so the, the trended investment method based on the original purchase price for the equipment in those lines were what was left alone. That resultant value was, was untouched. But there was obsolescence applied to the other lines that were not in, the one, two and the six, that were basically moved to a salvage level. And Marshall and Swift values salvaged the lowest on, on machinery, fixed assets, machinery, equipment at, at 6%. And so that was what was applied to all of the equipment. 6% good was, was what, so 94% depreciated down on the overall original purchase price of, of that equipment. And so for lines one, two and six, that salvage value is, is all the value that was assigned to those lines. The rest of them were depreciated based on their age from that reproduction cost. And so the lines that were in fact in operation. And so that's why our overall value is actually going to, to deviate from the weighted average that was used because it in fact is lower than any of the other, excuse me, any of the other values that were used. And so utilizing any of those other ones would actually increase from that, that partially salvaged trended method that we decided to, and we are recommending that the board sustain. So I will, excuse me, let me flip to the, the page. So we're asking that the board actually adjust the, the assessed, the current assessed value, leaving the land where it is at 378,752, so 378,750. A building and structure value, which includes the fixed machinery, equipment, but does not include the personal property that was assessed for the, the subject on a different account number, different parcel number. But that building and structure and machinery, equipment value comes to $154,610,000. So 154,610,000. Leaving a total assessed value of $154,988,750. And we ask that the board adjust and uphold that new recommended value. Does everybody have those numbers?
Yes.
Yep.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to say, we, we really appreciate the Department of Revenue and the Assessor's Office reconsidering their value. We recognize that they doing so is not done lightly because of course the assessor does lose any presumption correctness that they otherwise have under the law in doing so. I would also like to say, before we go again to confidential, if, if we may. But before we do that, yeah.
Before, you want to say something before we do it?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may. That, I, I would like to just say, first of all, the Department of Revenue in its write-up, in its page 66 of your, out of your 68-page packet, exhibit B4, the Department of Revenue Appraiser said himself. Second, if in fact this property is struggling, as I suspect, he wasn't sure, but as I suspect, a buyer who is continuing to, looking to continue operations would pay more attention to the performance than the cost. It doesn't matter how much something costs if you cannot make money out of it or cannot make money with it. As the, the Department of Revenue itself previously recognized that a trended investment method of any portion of this plant would not match market value. And yet the correction that is being proposed is that this property could profitably run three lines and, and just the rest would be considered salvage or scrap. And so the value for that reason is still coming out at over twice the very optimistic value that the company itself had valued this at, that we're requesting. And I have just a few brief comments, if I may, on the confidential portion, unless you have questions. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're back on the record.
Any questions? Questions? I think that's it.
This concludes the Grant County Board of.
This concludes the Grant County Board of Equalization hearings. The board will review all the information provided and board orders stating their decision will be issued within 45 days. If either party disagrees with the board's decision, they may appeal to the Washington State Board of Tax Appeals within 30 days of the mailing of this board order. Okay, Mr. Chair, we are open and on the record.
Okay, on 24-001. Fox Rothschild, Michelle Delap. Do we have a motion?
I move we sustain the assessor's evaluation.
I can go with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, go to one. All right, on 24-006, SGL Carbon Fiber America, Fox Rothschild, Michelle Delap. Have motion?
Motion, we accept the petitioner's value.
Second.
I didn't hear what he said.
He said he moved it, we accept the petitioner's value.
Petitioner's value?
Yeah. Compelling's value.
This is how it's supposed to work, though. It may be frustrating, but this is exactly how it's supposed to work.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, go to one. There you go.
So they both, you accepted both of them? The petitioner's value on both of them?
No.
No.
On the first one.
On the first one, the second one you did, sorry. The second one you did, I apologize.
All right, I guess we can go off the record. You are seeing one of the two.
Okay, we are going back on the record for our meeting of the mines.
Let's talk about the one that was on the the list to begin with.
The draft policies and procedures? The the late filing. So I emailed you all the late filing. We've since got 21 more.
Tuesday?
Just yesterday afternoon, yes.
21 more from the same person.
So the late filing, good cause waiver, was received from Janet and Calvin Kui. They are listing as the reason is letter E, which is taxpayer was unable to file a petition by the filing deadline because of a delay or loss related to the delivery of the petition by the postal service. The taxpayer must be able to provide documentation from the postal service of the delay or loss. When I requested them to provide that information from the postal service, they said, how are they going to do that? Because it was mailed to a totally different address than what their address was and that it was changed back in 2021. The assessor's office did say that they have not received any returned information in the last three years. So they've been sending these things and they have not once received a return mail.
And the onus is on the taxpayer to give us the information. So I would I would recommend that we do not accept their late filing.
I think the taxpayers provide the evidence that it was sent to the wrong address.
How do they prepare that?
Yeah, how? By saying it?
Through the planning department, I mean.
But I can tell you, if you want to use record, that they had an appeal last year. So they got their change of value notice last year. But they haven't gotten it for three years? Something's not jiving. And we're just now getting it, but change of value notices went out in December?
Don't know.
See, that's my problem, four, five months later, six months later?
Or the post office treats their their mailers.
But once again, it's at, there's an ad in the paper saying change of value notices go out. Everybody in the county knows they go out at what time? Coming back five months later and saying, I didn't get my mail. That doesn't prove it.
People can't even be accepted as a public notice anymore because their subscription levels are terrible. Totally unrelated subject, but like not everybody receives a paper anymore. You don't, not every house in the county gets the paper.
Absolutely. But how else do you reach? You're required by law to have a paper of record. That's what we utilize.
Rosa, input.
Yeah, they got their assessment last year.
I can take a motion.
Does all of us or just?
I'm not accepting a late filing.
I would second that.
To accept the late filing or deny? Deny, okay, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The next one.
This is the one that you have not seen yet. Late yesterday afternoon, we received 21 petitions from North American Foreign Trade Zone Industries. And they're just every parcel, but all the information attached is the same. So I'm just going to pass them out just so you can kind of.
It's the ASP group, if you recall. The airport, basically.
Right there, very, very first statement. Choose some input.
So I'll just read what letter A is from the exception, the approval. The taxpayer was unable to file a petition by filing deadline because of a death or serious illness of the taxpayer or a member of the taxpayer's immediately fat, immediate family occurring at or shortly before the time for filing. The purpose of this subsection, the term immediate family, includes but is not limited to grandparent, parent, brother, sister, spouse, domestic partner, child, grandchild, or domestic partner's child or grandchild.
I see no dates on here other than the general January through March.
Go. They provided medical records.
Admitted to IPR 130 of 25. 130 of 25, rest by case.
What does IPR stand for? What does IPR stand for?
I would assume it's the it's the.
Inpatient.
Oh, inpatient something, okay. My question is, I can't. Inpatient rehabilitation or something.
Are you doing?
Here for me to see? Oh, this computer, this thing is just plaguing me. And the deadline was January 30th, correct?
31st.
31st.
Change of value notice went out December 15th, something like that.
No.
The notice said January, December 31st.
December 31st, but they went out earlier than that.
So they had an extra 15 days.
And I think they shot themselves in the foot. Rosa, input?
No, they, we heard says they were there from January 20, 25.
Okay, still, you're you're over 30 days into the notice. This notice went out the 15th of January.
He said with the same person, probably not the, that's not thinking value for their houses.
It's not a house, it's a business. That's where I'm stuck. It's a corporation. One person shouldn't stop everything.
If he's not there.
Yeah.
Does the ball just get dropped?
And you're talking about what, a 15-year-old child? And then the other one's not until March. I, yeah, I got, it issues with this.
Port?
What? Well, it's all, it's the property right behind the port. All this, if you drive on Stratford going out of town, the big sign right behind the airport, you'll see it says ASP group. Property for sale, that's these guys. And they're actually doing a bunch of construction out there right now. No idea what it has to do with, and it's after one January. But I have to drive down Stratford the other day and, man, they're tearing that place up.
Yeah, we have, yeah, big, big new pad out there.
Yeah, so they're building something out there.
Yeah. After market, auto body parts.
Is that what it is? But once again, though, it's, I mean, they're starting to sell that land that unusable.
Can usable, yeah, unusable. All right, so take a motion.
I move.
Ready?
The dates he's provided, you know, sure, it's 44 days after the notice, you know, but he's still within that period. You know, that his son was injured or whatever medical issues popped up. To me, it looks like he broke his neck and back. Like businesses will often wait till the very last day to submit the filings. Happened to have that stroke of bad luck where there was a major family medical issue two days before the end of the filing period.
And I did, are we in discussion still? And so the hospital is January to March, correct? Basically, so why wait till the 23rd of June to file your late filing?
I was during.
Then his father started having medical issues almost concurrently or right after the son was released. Son's medical emergency, January to March. Father's critical illness, March to May. Immediately following my son's hospitalization, my father admitted ice. Having these emergencies created uninterrupted period of family crisis prior to my cost of presence decision.
And we have motions. Your name.
I'm sorry.
I would second the motion. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, go to one. I just, yeah. There's there's a time issue, I think. Do you understand what we did?
Yeah, but.
Tell me what you feel.
My friend said it was concurrently. I, like, when I do my job, I'm responsible for certain things. So I think if I was not working, people would not know exactly what I needed to do, like if I needed to file things or not.
Okay, but if you got the notification on 15 December, we had from 15 December to.
January.
January, late January, January 30th?
31st.
Well, his son went into the hospital toward the end of January, which is still there in the open filing period. And I understand that.
And in that that date section, it says, you know, unable to file a petition because filing deadline or by the filing deadline because death, serious injury, members, da, 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 occurring at or shortly before the time for filing. It's occurring at the time of filing.
I could understand it more if it was a father in a household and has a job. But if he's working for a big company, I would think that somewhere, somebody along the way would say, oh, when we get our tax notification or assessment, you know, that that should put a red flag up to somebody to, maybe we better, Jim's not here today, maybe we should address this. Or or I'm sure he comes in periodically, put it on his desk and red flag it or something.
Gary?
What?
Input?
I've already given my input.
We already voted, so.
Yeah, that's. You're just gonna toss them, right?
I have the right letters.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's 21 different parcels that they're involved in.
They have, they have appeal process, right? They have appeal.
Not after this, it's it's. If you choose not to hear it.
Next year.
Okay, next, next thing. I emailed all of you the draft policies for procedure. I'm just going to make sure. Caitlin, can you hear us, ma'am?
Yes, I can.
Perfect, okay. Hopefully you've all had a chance to take a look at them. One of the questions that I've had was on page two regarding membership. It says the committee shall be made up a total of six members and three of those are primary, three are alternate. We have not received the official notification yet from Mr. Lights in writing, so we're down to two. But the county commissioners have waited, decided to wait until we get that official notice in case he does change his mind. So have not received that as of yet. It was after the hearings the last time, so it's been almost two weeks. It's been one week since I met with the county commissioners to ask them when, what they wanted to do to proceed. So my question was, do you want three alternate members or two? Since I think this was done when you guys were having five.
Find, tell me where, what, where you find the.
Page two, the draft policies.
I don't have that.
What date was that?
Monday, Monday of this week, yeah, Monday at 1:00.
I don't have it.
I see you guys all.
Monday?
Yeah, it's Monday.
Oh, 16, 616.
623.
Oh, no, it'd be 623. 623.
Correct.
I don't have it, do you?
Yeah. It says Monday.
I don't have it.
Nope, she doesn't.
The last one I have is Tuesday, the late filing.
All right, I just re-forwarded it to you, to the Grant County email address.
I'm just a problem today, I guess.
Caitlin, I apologize. I did not holler at you for the deliberations. I had forgotten a bunch of things today and I forgot that too. I gotta make the time sheets and the things too, so.
Do you have the time sheets saved in Teams?
I do.
Do you want me to update those real quick and run them down?
If you have time, along with their mileage.
Yes, I should be able to, to do that.
Okay, what, what are we? Are we questioning?
Thank you, Caitlin.
What are we questioning?
That's page two, under membership. That's my question, so I don't know if you guys, Caitlin has been drafting policies for a lot of the boards that we have and so, after our last meeting, it was discussed that we would draft some for this board as well.
And I think the discussion we had before was, do we need three people to sit around and, and be in? Just, just to be available. I, I don't know that we've ever used all three, because that would mean.
I don't know that we've ever used any of us, because it's always coordinated.
Right.
You, you know, if you're not gonna be here tomorrow, usually call Jim or Barb and say, I'm not gonna be here tomorrow. Rosa, can you be here tomorrow? I mean, you know, I know initially while we're training, you wanted people to sit and observe and stuff, but. Yeah.
Well, Rosa, how do you feel about coming up to the board? Do you wanna come up and sit up on the board next, next meeting? Or do you wanna, do you want to?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind.
We do have Marge gone, July 17th and 24th.
Right.
So you can get me my gift ahead of time. You know, I'm just.
Chocolate, she likes chocolate.
I have to come in for the left meeting before the 17th, so I'll, I'll bring you an early gift.
I just had to say that.
Wow.
My birthdays are big.
Yeah, my birthday.
Just a recommendation on that verbiage, that membership, the committee should be made up a total of, you know, once again, my recommendation would be five, but that's up to the board entirely. But I would say, members of the county, I, you know, we, we need to be caught, in my opinion, steer clear of the district thing. Because it needs to be not political. It needs to be, we need to have the best people in the county that wanna be here.
And I think that's the discussion that we, we need to have, because it's not.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
We don't, we don't need people that don't wanna be here. We need people that wanna be here and be interested.
Where was that section, Jerry, you were looking at?
Membership, Article Two, Item One. That's where it says six members and we talked about five and then.
Yes. And three alternate members. You said of the county after all.
I see, that's just my opinion.
Because here it doesn't say districts at all.
No, I, but if you put it in there, then we're kind of.
Well, and before, they kind of indicated to us that they would like to have someone from each district, but it didn't happen.
You're gonna have somebody come up for an hour meeting from Madawa, you know, from, from, wow.
Blackberry.
Grancooly. Never mind, there goes my argument.
But, but, I, I, I understand your argument. I mean, it's, 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 um, yeah, I, I don't know. I, I, I tend to agree that I don't think we need, we don't need a total of six, so we need to, we need to change that to five. And I think that we need to, we need to, uh, you know, county, I like that, what, how did you put it, the?
Residents of the county, I mean.
Residents of the county?
Yeah, and, and just leave it open-ended like that, because if we don't put anything, that leaves the chance they could put districts in there.
Right.
Yeah. Although it's, it's your, ours, not yours, ours, our policies, it's not the commissioners. Ultimately, we're signing it.
Yeah.
Now, if it's in violation of something the commissioners got, then we got an issue we'll have to resolve, you know?
So we could put residents of the county in which entity? The last sentence of number one?
Must be residents of Grant County.
Like to get interest in there too, but I don't know how you do that. I mean, I don't know how you, how you'd put that into, into the thing, you know, interested parties.
But see, yeah, this is just.
I'm so, I'm so sorry to jump in here, I was, the, um, where were you saying to add that? Because there is like the requirements, the BOE members shall meet the following requirements, and it just says members shall reside in Grant County. And then also, Jim, to your point, uh, so it's section four, bullet D. There's like the members shall desire to serve as an employee, that might hit what it is that you're saying about having an interest.
Yes, yes, that's good.
Also, Barb, I put 8:30 to noon on these time sheets, is that right, or is it supposed to be?
Yeah, the, the ending is not sure yet, so let's go. It's 8:15, they all got here. And then the, it all depends on Rebecca and the last hearing. So if you wanna just open in that bad boy.
Okay, but I, I need it to be in half-hour chunks of time.
Probably 12:15.
Okay.
Maybe.
At the earliest, yeah.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I have, I question about is, and we're gonna get the answers with Rebecca, is under item three in voting, about how we vote, be it open or in private or whatever, so. Other than that, kudos to you, Caitlin, nice job.
He thanks.
Brandon, since you just mentioned you're using your personal computer, I just wanna show you at the bottom of page four.
Which, which portion?
About using your personal devices. It may be subject to public records disclosure. It is very, very strongly suggested you don't use anything personal.
The keyboard on the iPad was not working at all this morning.
Don't we have?
This unattached keyboard.
Yeah, I couldn't get my keyboard to work either.
That was happening last time and I would just unplug it and plug it back in and it'd work, and I tried that five different times.
Okay.
Went through the settings.
Okay, so what happened?
I don't, I don't know how we resolve that, because I, I agree, I, I couldn't get my keyboard to work either for.
I didn't know until just now, so we could have had tech services come down, so maybe we have you guys come in a little earlier to plug in and if we need to, we can get them to come down. We could try that.
8:15 is early enough.
I know, but if you want your technology to work, I.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
On, um, members, it says members shall attend all required meetings, training and hearings as directed by the Chair of the BOE. Does that include the alternates? Should they be here every meeting?
As directed by the Chair, so.
All members of the, we're the member of the BOE, we're just an alternate member.
Yeah.
So all members, yeah, we're at his discretion. Isn't that in call?
We need to decide who's gonna be here on the 17th and 24th.
Right.
One of each.
What's that?
One of each.
Well, and honestly, yeah, I mean, get her as much time as possible.
I understand.
Yeah, I can be here on the 17th and we can alternate, like, every other time, whenever you guys are absent. Whenever you can't make it, I'll make it.
So we don't have any on the third, correct?
Correct.
What, we do on the 10th?
No, do not have on the 10th.
It's the 17th.
Jeez, we get three weeks off?
Yeah.
That was not my choice. I wanted to hear it the whole time.
Understand.
Did I remind you that I'm working on my birthday?
I'm Sunday, right? Think I have it on my calendar now.
Yes, I know. Siri added that for me, I'm sure. So we should say.
Well, I'll get her balloons.
I know, I know, you're in charge of balloons.
So how old are you gonna be if it's gonna be your birthday?
Thirty-nine.
I am okay with being 54 this year. Every day I wake up is a blessing.
You're not young, you're not old, it's perfect.
Yes. So should we put Rosa on the 17th, Jerry on the 24th? Or do you wanna swap it? What did you, rock any scissors?
Whatever works best for the board.
Are you gonna come in on the 17th, or are you gonna?
If you want me here, it's up to you, you're the boss. We just discussed that. We're at the beck and call of the Chair.
Can you get credit for shoe leather walking over here?
Not a dime.
Oh, man.
I told this for free.
No, I just don't get paid mileage. Unlike some people.
Lambert fees.
Yeah, seventeen-dollar check that cost me five dollars to take to the bank.
I wasn't looking at you, Brandon, I was looking at somebody that gets, his travel check's bigger than his hourly check.
Ouch.
Well, that's just the way it is. I mean, you live that far away. I mean, Richard would be the same thing if he was coming up from Madawa.
So you're from here?
Yeah, because you got them sixty-eight, sixty-eight and a half.
If you were here from.
No, are you from here, Freda?
Yeah, I live like two blocks over there.
That's why I asked about shoe leather, yeah. Except he's got rubber sole, so it doesn't make any difference. Anyway, okay. So, you'll be here on the 17th, you'll be 24th, but come in, yeah.
I'll be here. And I'm retired, it's all about the money now.
Not until after Rebecca's meeting and then we'll finish more about.
Yeah, we only got. We have an 11 o'clock hearing, so.
Awesome. Caitlin, anything else you wanna discuss about the policies?
Can we add there, there should be coffee.
Clerk should provide coffee and donuts.
I guess the only thing that I just want to confirm is that the board, well, everybody feels comfortable with the reasonable time. That second part on the first page for late cause, or sorry, good cause, late filing waivers, I wanna make sure everybody read that and is fine with that.
Tell me again where we're going.
First page, number two.
Okay.
I'm on the wrong page.
Now, just for clarification, 30 calendar days from, for timing position, but it still goes to the board to review whether to accept or not, correct?
No, so the way that this would be set up is that if it's turned in beyond that 30th day, it is, it would be automatically denied for that policy.
And that 30 days, anything during that 30 days would come to the board for review.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, I'm good, yeah.
So that 21 packet wouldn't even have been accepted, okay.
Again, gotta have a written policy, and that's the only way you can enforce it.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm good with that, Caitlin.
Cool.
You're good?
Don't see our 11 o'clock as of yet. I did email him the information. Okay, I'm gonna run up for just a sec.
See you soon.
Good morning, Mr. Miranda, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you guys just fine, thank you.
Perfect. I'm Barbara, nice to meet you.
Hello, Margaret. Hey, Ruben. Good morning.
I guess I could just.
One in front of you too.
See that one back there.
First time, yeah, I think this is the first time seeing you, but usually it's the back of your head.
Well, since you are online, sir, we are gonna go ahead and get started. Are you good to do that?
Uh, I might have a few people joining. Uh, I don't expect, uh, I think they'll just be listening in, I don't expect anybody will be testifying.
Okay, we have a David ready.
Yes, he's with Yahoo.
Okay, do you want him to be promoted to a panelist? Or just?
Yeah, let's, well, let's promote him and then if necessary, then we can, uh, he can just mute himself if he doesn't, if he doesn't speak.
I've just gave him, okay, he will be rejoining as a panelist. Okay, I'll keep my eye out, oh, here we go, Ruby Quat, is that correct?
Right, she's a colleague of mine.
Perfect, we're gonna promote her to a panelist as well. Okay, are you expecting anyone else?
Uh, anybody else who joins, I, I think will just be listening in, so.
Ruby did decline to be a panelist, just so you'll know, so she's just in listening status.
Understood.
Okay, here we go. Today is Thursday, June 26, 2025, and we are on record with the Grant County Board of Equalization, and we'll be hearing petition number 2024-200 for parcel number 82639-4828330. Represented by Yahoo Holdings, Kroll LLC, is Ruben Miranda, who is in attendance. The assessor's office is represented by Matt Hope, who is also in attendance. Please silence your cell phones and note that these hearings are being recorded and will be posted to the BOE YouTube once the order has been issued. Mr. Chair, the board is convened and the hearing is open.
Hearing today is regarding true and fair value set by the Grant County Assessor's Office. Board of Equalization is independent of the assessor's office. There are three citizens appointed by the Grant County Commissioners and trained by the Department of Revenue. Today's board is comprised of myself, Tim Breakbells, Chair, Marge Steinman, Vice Chair, and Brendan Douglas, Member. We reviewed all evidence presented by both parties and the hearing is only to provide any additional oral testimony. No new evidence may be submitted this time. Remember, everyone's time is valuable, please try to keep to the timelines. Please address the board only. Do both the appellate and the assessor's representatives, that would be both Ruben and David, agree to swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Yes.
David?
I do.
Okay. Uh, the appellate will go first and present any testimony, then will be followed by the praiser. Go ahead, Mr. Miranda.
Okay. Uh, thank you, board. Well, really, you're gonna focus on Exhibit A of the petition. Just for facts, the value set by the county assessor is 183,779,281 dollars. And, uh, the petition that we've submitted revises our taxpayer estimate, or the appellate estimate of value, to be 59,600,000 dollars. Okay, so I just wanted to get that clarified. Uh, but Exhibit A, we'll focus solely on that. Uh, the other exhibits are, are just referenced in here, we don't need to run through them all. Uh, this concerns the, uh, personal property for Yahoo's Quincy Data Center. Uh, the personal property is comprised of servers and network equipment. Uh, this is valuation year 2024, uh, the valuation date, 1/1/24, uh, concerning tax year 2025. Okay. Page A2 of the exhibit, um, this is a summary of the, the Grant County Assessor's Office, that they did rely on an advisory appraisal from the Washington Department of Revenue to value these assets. Specifically for the personal property was the subject of this appeal, the DOR did conclude on what's known as the trended investment method. It relies on costs trended and then depreciated to arrive at the balance. It relies on costs trended and then depreciated to arrive at the value for the personal property. We have two issues with the methodology in which they conducted. For starters, the DOR, when they performed this appraisal, within the personal property, they had actually assigned real property and further included retired property that Yahoo had already removed from their books and records and eliminated from their property and service. They included that in their costs by which they then depreciated, so it included additional property that did not exist. That's one issue, the second issue is that we identified that the DOR is relying on an excessive network equipment life, so the property is being depreciated over a much longer period of time than you would expect from a market standpoint. And we'll go each of those one by one, so page A three. The timeline was that, you know, that the first of the year, the DOR had requested the taxpayers' historic cost of all the personal property that's located in Grant County, free of any purchase adjustments or allocations. This information is compiled by Yahoo annually. They presented that to the DOR. Property costs for the personal property were totaling out four hundred and eight million, six hundred and eighty-five and sixty-four dollars. That's going all the way back to two thousand and four, I guess there's, you know, a couple of pieces of furniture that are still sitting out there. Most of this equipment is computer-related, though. The DOR, and according to their, their appraisal, the twenty twenty-four appraisal, specifically Exhibit B, they don't use the costs that were furnished by the taxpayer. They've started with a personal property cost of six hundred and eighty-one million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-one, so almost three hundred million dollars more of property than what the taxpayer reported. And then we also note that that's the same starting point that they used last year in the last year's appraisal. So the twenty twenty-three DOR appraisal of, of this same property, their Exhibit C, the total starting point for personal property was the same number, six hundred and eighty-one million dollars. Well, how can you start with six hundred and eighty-one million and end with six hundred and eighty-one million dollars? You know, we have evidence showing that Yahoo did in fact retire a bunch of property. So we still don't know where they're getting the six hundred and eighty-one million dollars, we've never gotten a good answer from them. But we believe it's from prior year reported cost schedules that they've taken property that has since been retired from many, many years ago and just thrown it back on because of, you know, some sort of belief that the taxpayer is withholding information. You know, they've also included what we've identified as real property. And one thing that I would note here is that the twenty twenty-four appeal, you know, in past years, Yahoo has appealed both the personal property and also the real property, the actual facility itself. Well, the twenty twenty-four appeal, this property has since been sold to a different data provider, data center provider. And that appeal was handed off to the new owners, and that's since been settled. So the value of the real property is no longer a question because Yahoo does not own any real property. And, and this valuation should be consisting solely of the personal property that's, that's on the location. What we're identifying is real property that's being taken from the other parcel and being applied to this one. So there's a bit of a double assessment going on here. You know, in some, the DOR costs, we believe are inaccurate, they do not reflect the personal property assets for Yahoo at that data center as of one one twenty-four. Okay, page A four just shows the evidence. The taxpayer did in fact retire around thirty million dollars of personal property from twenty twenty-four, you can see that in the renditions year over year on what was provided to, to the county and also to the DOR. Again, there's no adjustments made for retirements because they're starting with the exact same number from last year. All right, page A five. And so, once we've identified that the DOR has been cobbling together old asset lists from many, many years ago to try to produce a property, a starting point that's not reflective of what's actually in place. Well, we, we don't think they've done their due diligence. The first of all is, there's no due diligence that was taken to verify the accuracy of their costs, their costs are old, they're ancient history. They're trying to bring them forward as if nothing has happened, well, you know, what have you done, DOR, to identify whether these costs have changed, what property in there has since been retired? There was no due diligence taken to confirm the costs were personal property in nature. They took the cost and they slapped them in the schedule and then assumed that, yep, that's personal property. There's no due diligence that was taken to confirm the assets had not been retired. No due diligence taken to confirm the assets were not being double assessed. And there's no due diligence that was taken to eliminate the calendar year twenty-three net deletions. And for all those reasons, we don't think that the DOR's starting point of six hundred and seventy-something million dollars should be used, you should be using what the taxpayer provided, which is the four hundred and eight million dollar starting point. Page A six just identifies that when you take that four hundred and eight million dollar starting point and you depreciate it based off of the DOR's twenty twenty-four guidelines, which is listed in Exhibit F, that the personal property value comes in at sixty-nine million dollars. So that's already much lower than what the DOR is including, and it's primarily because they're starting with a much higher cost base, and not a fictional cost base. If you're adjusting it with the cost base and using what the DOR recommends for their trend and appreciation schedules, you get sixty-nine million dollars. So that's the issue number one that we've talked about. Issue number two, page A seven, deals with the fact that the DOR's recommendations rely on a ten-year service life for servers and network equipment. And we've kind of mentioned this, that this personal property is all of the servers and all of the, the switching equipment that resides at that data center, that's personal property. All of that equipment, according to Yahoo's own fixed asset capitalization policies, those are depreciated based off of a five-year useful life. And these policies are developed over time, it's not something they're just picking out of thin air. You know, because they're using it, you can see their, their, their capitalization policy to the right there on page A seven, right there under servers and network year, five years. Now, these are studies that they're performing, they're subject to annual auditing and scrutiny by the investors and the regulators, and they should be considered strongly as deviation from the guidelines, that's a focus, you could focus on the guidelines. They're not mandated to use these schedules, the DOR can depart if there's evidence, we're showing that there is. Page eight. We also note that Yahoo is not an outlier in using a five-year life for servers and network equipment. We pulled public comparables from over sixteen different companies showing that the average useful life falls somewhere between three to five years, and in very, very rare cases, up to ten. So what we're identifying is that there's a sense that the DOR is using that the, the recommendations and basically claiming that, well, we're doing this for everybody, but the fact is that they're valuing everybody incorrectly. We've got the evidence which shows that there should be a five-year life, not a ten. Page A nine shows what happens when you take the taxpayer's starting point of four hundred and eight million dollars and you adjust it by the five-year schedules, or actually, excuse me, a six-year schedule with the, with the DOR's guidelines, that's referred to as Trend II C, that's the table that, that refers to a, a six-year life. When you apply those tables against the four hundred and eight million dollars, you get a market value of fifty-nine point six million dollars for this property. And that's our conclusion, that's our recommendation, is fifty-nine million, six hundred thousand, that we, we hope the board adopts. Thank you.
Any questions?
You mentioned, or your, page A four, Exhibit A four says, taxpayer removed net total of thirty million and some change of personal property for twenty twenty-four, but it looks like that thirty million and change was over a period of about nineteen years? Am I misunderstanding something, or is that thirty million actually over that nineteen years?
That is thirty million over, you know, that's a fixed asset schedule, they're retiring assets of varying vintages, and those total of the various vintages total up to be thirty million dollars, so thirty million dollars costs went away because those assets had been retired.
So in your additions and deletions column on the right, like where it says twenty, two thousand and five minus three thousand and some change, that was an, an asset or computers from two thousand and five removed in twenty twenty-four?
Right, the, I think the, the additions and deletions, I'd focus on the computers column, you know, really, because that's where most of the dollars stake are, are we're talking about. Example is vintage year twenty fifteen, you see nine million dollars worth of computers were removed year over year. Most of these, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So that, in twenty fifteen, that nine million dollar figure is nine million dollars worth of twenty fifteen equipment removed?
Yes, yes. Right, right, that's, the, the period of time it took place was calendar year twenty-three, but that asset was purchased and, and capitalized in twenty fifteen.
Okay, and removed in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four?
That's right.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions?
All right, this is for petition twenty twenty-four dash two zero zero, this is the Yahoo Holdings, owned by Yahoo Holdings Inc., this is the personal property account that resides in the Yahoo Holding, or Yahoo Data Center, formerly Yahoo Data, Data Center. If you'll, in my response, if you'll turn to page three, it gives a, a brief overview of the conclusions of the appraiser that, that did the appraisal on the subject property. You'll see under there, there is an improvement value that's real property, that would be separate, but the personal property value is the, the value that was assigned to this account. The appellate's representative stated that their, the value, the overall value of the information they provided to the Department of Revenue for the twenty twenty-four valuation was around four hundred million, and they, they point out that the six hundred million that Department of Revenue used was the same number used in the year prior. And I'd like to give a little explanation as to the reason for that. The asset list provided by the Department of Revenue for the last few years has consisted, when, when that information is requested, it's requested at the original purchase price of the, the historical purchase price of the piece of equipment. The asset list received by the taxpayer, or from the taxpayer by the appraiser from the Department of Revenue, included assets that were penny assets for chairs, for equipment, for things that are, that have a higher value and historically have had a higher value, but now are, are valued at a penny. There were even some assets that had a negative value, which would say that they, they had to pay to have, or they, they had somebody pay them to take the equipment, is, is how I look at that. So because of the asset list not reflecting actual purchase price, actual original acquisition price for these pieces of equipment, this, these assets, that was the reason for not utilizing this, this asset list supplied was not, not a good usable list to, to utilize for the trended investment. So they had to revert back to information gathered prior that had those historical values, which is why that value is substantially different than, than the overall value supplied by the taxpayer. And so I just want to touch on, on that being, being the reason why those numbers are substantially different. When, when an asset list is, is gathered and, and gone through and there are, there's information like that, there were multiple attempts to try and get an asset list that, that reflected the true purchase price of this equipment, the historical purchase price of the equipment, and the asset list received continued to include these penny assets and these negative values. And we still have yet to receive an, an asset list that, that is a, a good asset list that, that can be used, that doesn't include those. So that, that was the reason for the, the information being as it was, and I just wanted to address that as it was pointed out. Now, moving on to the trended life and the expected life. We have been in communication a number of times with the taxpayer, informing them of the process to go through to change the expected life of the assets and how, how the Department of Revenue views the expected life of these assets. The taxpayer's own asset list, even the, the recent one supplied, shows that they have this equipment that they are deeming to have a three- to five-year life, or it's sometimes ten, for longer than that expected life, and in use, not disposed of, extending past that time. So there, the asset list and those assets, having been there for longer and still being used, show that there is still useful life in the equipment. And so there, there is an avenue to change that, there is a process to go through to provide that evidence so that we can change it on a whole, but we do value each property using those same trends for consistency throughout the county. So with, with that, I, I ask that the board uphold the current assessed value of the parcel property account under petition for the Yahoo Holdings Inc. at one hundred and eighty-three million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-one. Again, that's one eight three, seven seven nine, two eight one. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Miranda, any remarks?
Just on two items, board, thank you. You know, regarding the, the use of the, the starting point for the costs, I know in years past, there was, you know, some discussions in prior appeals about the need to have an asset list that was, that contained the original purchase prices for the assets going back several years. Yahoo did undertake, you know, a very strong effort to, to clean up their, their asset listings several years ago, and since I would say around twenty-one or twenty-two, they've been reporting the, the, the cost, the historical cost going back that don't have any of those types of adjustments, these are the original costs that were, that were incurred at the time of the investments being taken. So all of those adjustments, all of the, you know, so-called penny assets, all of that had been cleaned up. And, and somehow the, the DOR didn't bother to look at it and notice that the assets don't exist anymore. You know, I think the fact that they're using the same cost year over year, I don't think they're interested in, in, in taking into account this information or recognizing that, yes, Yahoo has now satisfied the DOR's request. You know, instead, they seem content on assuming that that property is gonna stay in place indefinitely. And this is just, that's just not how fixed assets work. The other item is concerning the, the DOR guidelines. We have been in discussions with the, the DOR, there is an avenue for presenting information for the authors of the DOR guidelines to consider changes. Now, we have done that in the past, you know, they, they saw to not see it as we saw it. But at the same time, you know, we've also been, you know, recognizing that the DOR guidelines are just that. You know, the DOR is not bound, they're not mandated to use the recommendations, these are just simply guidelines. And furthermore, you know, the Grant County Appraisers Office is not bound to use the guidelines. The taxpayers provided evidence and strong evidence that shows that in this particular case, the valuation for this property should be subject to a five or six year depreciation, not a ten. And that being the case, you know, that does give leeway, that does give judgment to these appraisers. And by not considering that, that there's no due diligence being undertaken on their part. That's it.
That it?
Uh, that concludes it on my end. Um, thank you.
Okay, Miranda? Oh, wait, sorry.
Fine, just just wanted to, uh, respond to that. It's the opinion of the appraiser that there isn't, even though there's evidence supplied that other companies use a useful life less than what the Department of Revenue has seen. Judging by the asset lists provided by the taxpayers that, uh, these trends are applied to and the equipment that is applied to and the the life that that they are getting out of this equipment, it's the appraiser's opinion that that shouldn't be adjusted based on that, that there wasn't, that this is not sufficient evidence that it should be adjusted.
Right, anything else, Mr. Miranda?
No, that's, uh, that's it for me, board.
Right.
Okay, this concludes the Grant County Board of Equalization hearing. The board will review all the information provided and board orders stating their decision will be issued within forty five days. If either party disagrees with the board's decision, they may appeal to the Washington State Board of Tax Appeals within thirty days of the mailing of the board order. Thank you.
Good day.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
Okay, we are back on the record.
I take a motion. Take a motion, we accept accept the assessor's praise value.
Second.
Any any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Once again. Good job.
Well, you could always give her, um, the ability to unmute at the very least.
Set the timer for fifteen minutes.
Okay, oh, she declined to be a panelist.
It probably just timed out.
Here she comes.
Walking down the street.
Hello, Rebecca.
Hello.
There you are, hello, oh, she, oh, that she froze for a second. Thank you so much for joining us today.
You're welcome.
Who would like to start with the?
Well, I I think I think we've had a discussion and and I I I would like to get clarification only because we've been doing it one way and and, um, the opinion of of the the person doing the training basically gave us another way to do it. So we went to that way and I I'm, I still say that our our deliberations and our verdict should be in closed session because it's just like, I like like going to court. Uh, a jury doesn't doesn't go back into the into the court and make a decision and and tell the court at that point in time, they come back in with a decision that they're made in in closed session for deliberations. And and that's why I think we're looking for this this answer.
And Rebecca, I apologize, that was Jim Breakbill, he's the chair of the Board of Equalization.
I didn't introduce myself, sorry.
You're muted.
Oh, you're muted, you're muted.
You're muted, we can't hear you.
Let's try that again. Um, my name's Rebecca Kaler. I am the chief civil deputy prosecuting attorney for Grant County, so I'm happy to meet you all. Um, can you give me a little bit more background, um, regarding, uh, it sounds like you went to a training and you got this information?
I don't think it was the training, I think it was it was actually.
It was me, I I was, I opened a can of worms because I just.
Your specialty.
Yes.
So you know Caitlin.
I just didn't understand the way that they were doing it. So then we were trying to find out the answer and we emailed Ricky Bland with the Department of Revenue. And she's the one that does the training, like she leads the trainings for, you know, the clerks and the senior members and new members and stuff for Board of Equalization. And that was her response that we had sent you, where she had said that they should, they can do their deliberations in the closed session, but that they should be coming out of the closed session to take their vote and announce their decision and stuff.
Um, so there's a couple ways that you could approach this. Um, I did not find anything that, um, supported that, um, there was, I believe she used the term, um, it was supposed to be similar to the O P M A. I I did not find anything in my research that indicated that. So one approach could be you could write back to her and ask her, um, what authority she's relying on that, um, would indicate that, um, the the deliberations, um, was supposed to reflect, um, or be similar to the O P M A. So so that would be one one approach. Um, because, uh, there could be something out there and I just missed it, possible. Um, the information I found, um, was that the, um, board as a, uh, the Board of Equalization as a quasi judicial board is not subject to the O P M A. Um, and their decision making process is more in line with what you would expect in a court. Um, as, um, more from the perspective of a judge, um, making judicial decisions. Um, so that was what I found when I did my research. Um, so you could, so the one, like I said, one of the approaches you could, um, use is just to, Caitlin, you could just simply respond back and ask, um, do you have, um, authority that you're or what is the authority that you are relying on that would indicate that specific, um, piece is supposed to be in line with the, um, the O P M A? Um, the other, I mean, you you can always, so if I understood correctly, um, your your position is that you would prefer to not follow the O P M A, um, procedures and that you would like to keep deliberating, um, in executive, uh, session, is that, is that, am I understanding this correctly?
You're correct, and that's the way we had done it in the past.
Not just deliberating, we're talking the vote. So deliberating in closed session, we understand.
Right, right.
The vote.
Right, it's the vote itself.
And then coming out, um, and taking the vote in, okay. Um, so wanna, so there's no nothing that I could find that indicated that you cannot use that procedure. So, um, if you want to be, and if you, um, are risk adverse and you want to avoid, um, any kind of action against you, um, whether you win or lose, um, it costs the county money. Um, if you if you want to avoid any kind of action, then, um, you can use that procedure. Um, the likelihood, I mean, it would probably, my best guess, I I'd have to go back and look. Um, I believe, I'm trying to remember standing for suing under the O P M A. I don't recall, um, what standing you need, um, to, uh, sue under the O P M A. I believe anybody can, but I would have to double check on that. Um, so, so you wouldn't be, I I don't believe you would be limited to just the, um, uh, just the, um, the parties, um, that appear before the, um, Board of Equalization. I believe, um, anybody can sue under the O P M A, I can double check that. Um, so that does, you know, broaden your risk. Um, but, um, the third approach would be to, um, just continue like you have been doing and see if anybody, has has anybody, um?
I was gonna ask, I was just gonna ask that question, was this historical? I mean, I don't believe we have been challenged in 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 having our deliberations and our votes in 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 private. Uh, I I I, that's that's where, I, go ahead, Jerry.
Oh, hi Rebecca, Jerry Gingrich, um, I'm now on the board, so, um, but no, nothing has ever been challenged. I guess my question to you as our legal, uh, you know, counselor, would you feel comfortable if you had to defend this at the B T A? Because you're the one that's gonna be there, not us. Would you, is there anything that's gonna be a flaw in the case for Grant County if the board continued in this manner?
Um, and just to clarify, so the way we have it split, I'm the advisor for the Board of Equalization and, um, Barb is, um, would represent the assessor's office. Um,
I didn't want to try to get into weeds too far on that, so.
Yeah, totally, so our office would be involved, you're correct. Um, so whenever you you are dealing with it, so whenever you're dealing with, um, these types of issues, um, when there's not clear cut authority one way or the other, um, there is a lot of risk. I can tell you my best guess at what the courts are gonna say. I can tell you my best, um, analysis, but ultimately I have no clue, uh, because there's not clear, um, precedent or there's not clear authority regarding that. Um, so I think more than whether I'm comfortable, I I could, I could defend it. I I could defend what, any, either either way. If you want to, um, use the O P M A procedure, I could defend that. If you want to use the previous, um, or like the, just the quasi judicial approach, I can defend that. I, from my perspective, I have, I I can defend either, um, either approach. I think the big question in my mind is, rather than what I would, I would defend, is are you okay with the outcome, um, of having something remanded back down? Um, I'd have to go back and look. I think, I think the result would be just a remand back. Um, it could be a complete dismissal, but I don't think so. I think it would be just a remand back for, um, a rehearing.
Well, and and Barb, you can jump in on this, but but Barb told me that that it's kind of a split scenario, some some people are doing it.
Counties.
Yeah, counties are doing it, doing it differently. So it's it's it's, some were doing it like we were doing it and then some were were following Ricky's.
Guidance.
Guidance, I guess, yes.
So let me, let me put this out there. When there's a split across the state like that, that makes an issue kind of rather ripe for the courts to take and decide. Um, so just be aware of that. Um, but again, I think the the ultimately, when it's not clear that you would be violating the O P M A, um, I I'd have to double check, but I believe the, um, the result would be, um, if a court decided that you did violate the O P M A, but there wasn't like a willful disregard, um, then I believe the the remedy would just be to remand it back for rehearing. Like I said, I can re, I can check into that. Um, so it's gonna be more about what your guys' comfort level is in this. Um, I think I I would like to know what D O R author, what authority D O R is relying on. Um, so I I would like, um, if you guys are okay with it, Caitlin, to reach back out and just ask.
I'm 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 good with their asking, but I I'm leaning toward going back to the way we were doing it in the past because it was, it was, it was smooth, it was easy. And if you can defend it, I I'm, you know, I find out. And if she has, if she has more information that we can, we can do our own research, we come back and change whatever we've decided, obviously.
Totally, yeah.
I just get confused because Ricky Bland's email says that we're exempted from the O P M A, but we keep referring to the O P M A. And so it's going back and forth. And I will just say that the whole fifty fifty split, you know, is just a guesstimate. But Pierce County, one of the largest Board of Equalizations, does it like you guys did. And I was surprised to hear that, so if.
Pierce County walla walla, who else, us?
It's a bunch, I mean, it's, there's thirty nine counties.
Yeah, I'm not, I would not say like a solid fifty fifty, but like when Emily and I were looking into it on our own, we found at least a small handful that would do it the way that you guys are currently doing, where you'd come out and vote, but they just say that flat out on their site, that the deliberations are closed and then the board will vote on their decision publicly or something like that. Like it would say something in their policies or whatever.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm good with you going and getting that reference information. And then we can, we can look at it again. But I I personally, at this point in time, feel that we we go back to our our old way of doing things because we didn't, we didn't have anything come back on us at that point.
Never.
Let's keep, let's keep playing the same game and not not change it on a knee jerk, you know what I mean? I mean, I I.
And I'm totally fine with that, um, that does not give me any kind of heartburn whatsoever.
Okay, that works. So I guess Caitlin, if you can reach out and get reference, that way we can hopefully get definitive answer. I, this is helpful, very helpful, because I, you know, I'm, I'm good with, you know, if you came back and said, you gotta do it thus and such, we do it that way. If you, if you're ambivalent about the way it's going, um, yeah, I I I like the way we were doing it, so.
Okay, yep, and I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, have a great lunch.
Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Done, Brandon, do you want to go?
Doesn't make a difference to me. I don't think it's an issue having our our vote public, but I don't see an issue having it not public either.
Yeah, I I I just, I.
I don't think anybody's gonna come hunting us down for voting one or the other.
I don't think so either.
I mean.
Never know, huh?
Just saying. Been a while. Um, so can you?
Yep, I'll do that today.
Can you change this and maybe we can get signatures before they go?
Yep.
Oh, so we're on overtime?
Officially, a minute ago, yes.
Well, we can always, your meeting in about three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah.
You wanna do that?
I would do that.
That's a full day, though.
Proof it. Yeah, we've already, she could email it to us, we all read it and sign it, we walk in the door.
That works, that works.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Caitlin.
That would also give us time to maybe get a response from Ricky, too, so, that'd be good.
Gut feeling is your response is gonna be guidance. Nothing definitive, but this is the way. Nothing definitive, but this is the way.
Oh, yes, thank you.